For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of March 5, 2018. Call the order, please.
Hess.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Nielsen.
Here.
Noack.
Here.
And Walagora.
Please rise to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any modifications to the agenda this evening? I think you have one.
Yep, I've got one. I would like to add to item number 15. When we adjourn to close session, discuss an active police investigation.
Okay. Second. Anything else? Are you ready?
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Mike and then Cindy.
Hess.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Nielsen.
Yes.
Noack.
Yes.
And Walagora.
Aye. Okay, approval of the minutes. Special session of February 15, 2018, and regular session of February 19, 2018, and closed session of February 19, 2018. Any issues or changes? Citizens peering before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time during tonight's council meeting that you're allowed to address council. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. Thank you. Tonight's consent agenda: A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $108,461.11; B is a city council reappointment of William Pfeifer to the City of Alpena Building Authority for a three-year term expiring March 1, 2021; and C is approval of the 2018 election inspector's wages. Will we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Johnson.
Yes.
Nielsen.
Yes.
Noack.
Yes.
Walagora.
Aye.
And Hess.
Yes.
Next up, we skip down to proclamations. Tonight I have one. It's Girl Scout Week on March 11 through the 17th. A proclamation celebrating Girl Scout Week and the importance of girls' leadership development. Whereas Girl Scouts is recognized as a national leader in providing the best leadership development experience in the world for girls, and whereas Girl Scouts, girls develop their leadership potential through activities that enable them to discover their values, skills, and the world around them, connecting with others in a multicultural environment; and whereas Girl scouting is continuing a legacy of creating gender-balanced leadership in the United States and the world in its second century of service to girls by providing girls with the tools to become leaders dedicated to making this country and the world a better place; and whereas Girl Scouts offers hands-on, girls-led, girl-centered learning in STEM, the outdoors, and entrepreneurship, and abundant opportunities to develop invaluable skills, helping all girls take the lead early and often; and whereas Only Girl Scouts offers girls a one-of-a-kind opportunity to become a Gold Award Girl Scout by engaging in leadership at the highest levels while addressing an issue they feel passionately about; and whereas the Girl Scout Gold Award, the highest honor a Girl Scout can earn, acknowledges each recipient's power and dedication to not only bettering herself but making the world a better place for others; and whereas Girl Scouts was founded in 1912 by Juliette Gordon Low, whose life mission was to build girls of courage, confidence, and character, and through her legacy continues to have an extraordinary influence on the lives of millions of girls across the country; and whereas today more than 59 million American women are Girl Scout alumni, and 2.6 million girls and adult volunteers are active members. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim March 11 through the 17th as Girl Scout Week in the City of Alpena. And we have plenty of Girl Scouts, too. Someone like to come up?
You gotta stand up, girl. You wanna be in the front. Emotional peace. Yeah, you're gonna have to stand up now. Otherwise.
Don't get my freebie this week.
You could just stand on the pedestal.
That's right.
Okay, everybody say cookies.
One more.
She did do that in my picture.
Oh, we gotta do that again. I can't bag the paper.
Then she took yours, and we had another girl show up.
No faces this time.
There we go. Now I'm getting out.
Thank you very much.
Earn your keep for it.
At least that was the question.
All right, next up, our communications and petitions. Our first is Michigan Arts and Culture Northeast, or MACNE, History of Industry and Alpena Sculpture and Budget Request. Tim Kuhnlein is here with us.
Hello, everyone. Just to make you feel reassured, I got the memo. I'm supposed to keep this short.
You're fine.
I am here actually on behalf of Thunder Bay Arts Council to appeal for funding for the upcoming sculpture project titled "History of Industry in Alpena." This will be comprised of six separate sculptures tied into one theme, using large monolithic stones. And on those stones, which will be donated by Conmus and Priscille, with large Priscille, we will have individual artists supply yet-to-be-selected artwork. So you've all received the package of the budget request. I think what I'll do at this point is just open it up for questions rather than walk you through the details. It's a pretty extensive summary of the project. What it does is highlight the locations, which will be near the Wishing Well at Van Leer Hall on ACC's campus along the bypath. Five of the stones will be located there, and then the corresponding sixth piece will be located at Washington Park. We're working with city staff to determine exactly where, but all of these will be tied to the theme of industry with subthemes corresponding.
The... One of the only questions I have was a consideration of a budget allocation for the project to... For a... And this was to be a match for one of the other foundation grants, is that right?
Yes. There are several participants in this. The foremost among them is the Besser Foundation. They give a rather large grant contingent upon finding matching funds, so their contribution would be equivalent of 20% of the total. So this is a $60,000 project, and the Besser grant is a portion of that 20%.
Okay.
So what we're doing is seeking the matching grants and in-kind contributions to make up the difference. The Alpena County Parks and Recreation Committee has already committed to this project. They'll essentially be funding the sculpture at Washington Park site. And then we've got basically the five remaining sculptures that we need to find additional support for. There are grants in at Community Foundation for Northeast Michigan, the Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs, you know, all the traditional places. This request is being made in light of some changes that have occurred with other projects to promote arts and culture that the city has been actively engaged in. Last time I reported, you may recall that I mentioned there were some issues occurring with MACNE. MACNE, in fact, is going to be absorbed by NAMCOG as a functioning committee of the US-23 Heritage Route Management Council. So MACNE will continue its operations, but we are not going to continue with Lake Huron Discovery Tour. And so in light of that, the thought was, in broader discussions, to keep Alpena investing in arts and culture, that given the fact that these sculptures are located within the city limits along the bypath, this might be a nice way to keep the money closer to home this time and change up the approach, the focus. So the budget request is for $5,000, and essentially it's the same amount we were asking in the past. If you can find it in your considerations for budget review, it would be much appreciated. I think it would make a huge impact in helping us complete this project. It's gonna... I don't know if you had a chance to look at the photo images, but it's intended to make a pretty dramatic statement.
Yeah, I did. I read most of it. That was why I had the question as to whether you were gonna read the whole thing during the meeting, which would've been fine.
And I should note that Mitch Conlon is here. She's past president of Thunder Bay Arts Council. If you can find the funding, the request is to make the allocation directly to Thunder Bay Arts Council since they are a 501(c)(3) and they are spearheading the resuscitation of the Sculptured Bypath Council.
Okay. Excellent. I don't have anything else. Anyone?
Okay, well, thank you very much for the consideration.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you. Yes. I think we can receive it in file.
Second.
Nielsen.
Yes.
Noack.
Yes.
Walagora.
Aye.
Hess.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, next up is the People for Social Justice, March for Our Lives on March 24, 2018. Christina, got it, Chu, am I right?
Yes, you got it.
Say that quickly.
Hi, yeah. I'm here for a completely different subject this time, but something that I'm really passionate about as a group, People for Social Justice. So thank you for this opportunity, giving me this opportunity to stand before you on behalf of the People for Social Justice and request permission of a council for all impassioned local citizens to organize a peaceful gathering here in Alpena in March, on Saturday, March 24, at 1:00 p.m. Following the recent shooting at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida that resulted in 17 fatalities, there's been a fervent outcry for Congress to enact legislation that will make it harder for individuals like the shooter in Parkland to purchase weapons of war to murder innocent people. The students at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School have called on citizens across the country to join them on March 24 in Washington, D.C., and in cities across the country for the event that they are calling the March for Our Lives. The March for Our Lives that we are organizing here on the same day in Alpena is to support the courage and the commitment of the Parkland High School students and the hundreds of thousands of young people across the country that are using their clear and eloquent voices to demand legislative change. We have a group at our local high school that's doing the walkout on, I believe it's the 14th, that is happening across the country as well. So this is to support those young voices that are really getting involved and understanding that they have a role to play. There are 14 planned marches in cities throughout Michigan and a large contingent of local residents who are looking forward to one happening here in Alpena. Our plan is for the march here in Alpena to begin behind the Noah Building, just on the riverfront, and then for us to cross the footbridge to get over to Chisholm and then end at Culligan Plaza. This is the same route that was followed for the March for Science last spring without a hitch. Numbers could be in the range of, I don't know, 150 to 200 people. We really don't know, maybe more. But we really look forward to having speakers. We know some young folks from the high school are gonna be speaking as well, and we're gathering other voices to be there. And then we'd also like to have some informational tables set up, probably some voter registration tables as well. We don't anticipate that the gathering at Culligan Plaza would last over an hour. And then the whole event, starting at 1 to... So I filled out paperwork to give to... For the event, so that it would be from 1 to 3. And my hope is that this evening you can hold a vote or whatever next step is necessary to grant us the permission to organize for the Alpena March for Our Lives. And if you have any... I know that the police department has been notified as well of our plan, so they're in the loop. But if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. I don't... Because the route is identical to March for Science, I don't see an issue. I didn't see anything from any of the department head, so...
I don't think there were any negative comments from anybody.
I would assume that would be the same. And you would probably get the same understanding... You would have to have the same understanding as you did then as far as impeding, not impeding traffic or pedestrians and such. Wouldn't expect that there'd be any issue since you've done this before, so I don't see any reason why we wouldn't be able to approve that tonight. You expected that, that's fine.
We have no issue.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you. I will reapprove the request from People for Social Justice in March for Our Lives on March 24, 2018.
Second.
Noack.
Yes.
Walagora.
Aye.
Hess.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
And Nielsen.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Now down to bids. The first one is network servers. I'll ask for a motion to be excused from the discussion and vote. As a clear conflict of interest, I work for panel processing. It's the company, the parent company for 1010 Technology.
You need a vote for that?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. I made the motion that we excuse the mayor from the conversation and from the vote.
Second.
Hess.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Nielsen.
Yes.
And Noack.
Yes.
All right. On Monday, February 12, the city received an open bid for two network servers and one video server for police in-car camera video downloads. Bids were received on the city... Were advertised on the city website and emailed to 15 vendors with eight bids received. We... The specifications outlined two standard network servers as well as two different versions of a video server for the upgraded, the new camera system for the in-car police cameras. And we did two of them because we had a custom build that was exactly the way that the company wanted. Found out later, it was a six-to-eight week turnaround to get this thing, and so we thought, well, maybe we'll try something a little bit different. Asked the company to... Asked the server company to spec something a little different, which was considered a stock build. So after we got all the bids in, it was a mess, as you can imagine, with different companies trying to bid it and things. We had to make quite a few calls for clarifications and things, but the bids are as presented below, and the real... Only the real two companies to talk about are SHI International, which is a company I've dealt with in the past on many, many things, purchasing things through them. They're our arm for state purchasing. We go to them for a lot of our state purchasing things. They hold most of the state contracts for IT stuff. And their network server was low, and the local bidder, 1010 Technology, was not within the 5%. Got a little sticky when we got into the custom build and the stock build video servers because they... Depending on which one we picked, one was lower, one was higher, based on the local bidder preference and things. But after some discussion with Joel Jet, it was determined that, you know, spending the extra $1,200, $1,300 just wasn't worth, you know, that lead time. You know, we could wait the extra little bit of time to get that. So we opted to go with 1010 Technology as the local bidder for the custom build server. That was splitting the bid with two different vendors. We did check with both of them, and they were very willing to do so. So we decided to go that way with it. There's sufficient funding for the network server purchase as budgeted, but the purchase of the video server does require an additional $1,360, and Joel Jet has funds that he can redirect towards the purchase of the video server for his department. And the budget amendment is attached with this memo. So in consideration of the above, it's my recommendation as IT coordinator to award the network server portion of the bid to SHI International in the amount of $7,723.90 and award the video server portion to the local bidder, 1010 Technology, in the amount of $5,693. And that will be splitting the bid as in the best interest of the city, and like I said, both vendors are in agreement.
I'm assuming this is all the newest technology going forward?
It is.
Are we one of the cars from now on that would be set this way?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, all the new cars will have the newer version of the camera. It's a little difficult right now because we're gonna have to maintain two systems because we have the old system with the older, you know, with the older cameras.
That was my next question.
Yeah, going forward, we're gonna maintain this new system. It's gonna be much better.
I don't have any questions. Would it be best to do this in two motion film?
I would, yes.
Okay, all right. I will reaward the video server to SHI International for the amount of $7,723.90.
That's not the video server. It's the network server.
Network, sorry.
Yes, for that one.
With that correction, so.
Second.
Johnson.
Yes.
Nielsen.
Yes.
Noack.
Yes.
And Hess.
Yes.
I will reaward the video server to 1010 Technologies for the amount of $5,693.
Second.
Nielsen.
Yes.
Noack.
Yes.
Hess.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Back. Next up, new business, Starlight Beach Trust Fund improvements. It's on your...
Good evening. On February 27, 2018, the city received an open bid from 2017 Starlight Beach MDR Trust Fund improvements. This project includes installation of the new splash park, removal of the dune sand from the park, beach sanding, wind erosion control measures in the form of concrete seat walls and concrete walkway improvements. Just a little bit of back history on this. This was a little bit different process that we went through this time, in the essence that we... About a week and a half prior to the bid receipt, we had the various splash park suppliers provide design concepts in four different options. And that's why in the spreadsheet that was laying at your spot tonight, it identifies. Basically, what we did is we had them to provide a design in 175 to 200, 200 to 225, 225 to 250, and then another option with a recirculatory system that basically filtered reuse the water in the process. Those were... We sat down with members of Rotary. They looked at the various design concepts and actually selected one supplier in option one, and the same supplier in option three, and then Vortex in option two, as the ones they really targeted. Those in turn were given to the contractors so they could get their best price from those There were two bids received, one from Meridian Contracting and one from MacArthur Construction. The base bid from Meridian, which includes all of the shoreline work, the additional concrete, the improvements, was $325,490.05 from Meridian and $331,375.25 from MacArthur Construction. Funding for this project is set up as such with Rotary Club providing $240,000 towards the splash park, Michigan Department of Natural Resources trust fund grant for $205,000, and the city committed $25,000 towards this project for total funding of $470,000. The committee of Rotarians and city staff... I already went through that. Vortex and their proposal, the one thing that was kind of a surprise, they indicated they needed at least a three-inch supply line, water supply line, to that, to the splash park. We originally planned on tapping off from the public bathroom water service, but that is only a two-inch, so we'd have to go back and run another three-inch water service in. It's estimated that'll be about another $16,000. And following the bids, I was tied up last week. So Shannon, in my office, did a phenomenal job. She went through the bids, and she analyzed some modifications, as I'll get to in a minute, so tried to bring our costs down within budget. The base bid for the project was over the anticipated cost and available budget. Some of the overruns can be attributed to an overall increase in concrete prices, and we were notified of that across the board, that concrete was going up this year. Staff has reviewed the bid items as well as the overall project design and have a tentative plan in place to overcome these overruns, allowing for the project to proceed within budget without forfeiting the overall scope of the project. We are continuing to work with the contractors and subcontractors to finalize these proposed changes, and we'll execute a change order to the contract once everything has been finalized, and we will bring that back to city council. Due to the DNR Trust Fund, because we do have that $205,000 coming from them, our award tonight, if you elect to award it, would be conditional upon MDR approval. We have to, and we have already submitted our proposed, our recommended contractor to them for their review. We haven't heard anything back as yet, but they will get back to us with an approval or if there's an issue with the contractor. There shouldn't be. They've done all our other projects, so I don't anticipate that. But just real briefly, we'll take a look at it. Just as an example, one of the changes in this... This may seem strange. Shannon and I talked about this, but the original design concept... Oh, there it is. Originally, he had the concrete just going across in front of these planters, and then there being red concrete curbing that matches the seat walls that came out to the back of the sidewalk. The unit price for that colored concrete curbing was so high that we were actually able to... basically expand our concrete walkway back to the, to the planters and saved about $3,000 in doing that. So those are the things that we're going to be looking at, ways to save money and still meet the overall and original intent of, of the, of the project. This is our existing Starlight Beach. It will, it will mimic this very, very closely. Our project did include a barrier-free access ramp down to the water's edge. So from the walkway down, there will be concrete, and then there will be this flexible mat that can be rolled out, used all summer if we need. In the fall, we'll take it back in, store it. Very manageable, and this, this was something that was actually recommended as, as an avenue to gain that barrier-free beach access. The concept from, from Vortex, we were, we were very pleased with all the different activities, the elements, the pieces that are included in the proposal from Vortex. And their price was, was very reasonable for the elements that we are getting. It's kind of tough to see, but on this giant dump bucket, one side will have the City of Alpena logo. The other side will have the Alpena Rotary logo on it as a funding. Originally, we had it designed to, to put the logos in the concrete. Very expensive, and actually, we could, they said, we can give you some more elements in lieu of that. So that's the route we went. And that was, that was acceptable with Rotary as well. The, the neat thing is, is that within the splash park, it's kind of divisioned off, for lack of a better term, that you have like the toddler portion, very limited, low-flow type. The, the intermediate, a little, little bit stronger spray, a little more activity. And then you have more, older kids and the adults. I tried to get Steve to superimpose a picture of Craig right in here, but.
I'm in the bucket.
But, you know, here's just a good example. You know, the bucket will fill, tip and, and deluge the park. Just as a, for reference, the darker shaded concrete is basically the splash zone for each individual element in, in the park. Again, the city's, city's logo on one side and Rotary's logo on the other. Overall, it's 20, 20, can't see that far. Total area is 3,024 square feet. Splash area is 2,214. I think Monday night, or last Thursday night at Rotary's Ruin the Bay event, they said it was about the size of Culligan Plaza. So nice-sized water park. And it is expandable in the future if we want to put an additional one, a smaller one, in that. So with that, it is my recommendation as city engineer that the project be awarded pending MDNR approval to Meridian Contracting Services LLC for the basement unit prices totaling $325,490.05 and the splash park option two price of $204,000 with a total project cost of $529,490.05. And then, as I said, we will be coming back to council with a contract mod to reduce that scope. So, you know, rewarding it as bid, but then we will be going back from that. And Rotary is excited about this.
Be confident you can hit the $60,059,490,000 back in two days.
Shannon, Shannon's already gone through and crunched the numbers on ways that we can do it. And she's got it. Right now, we're within about $3,000, and that's without doing any arse to get it.
I move we award the splash park project pending the Michigan DNR approval to Meridian Contracting LLC for the total project cost of $529,490.05.
Second.
Noah?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nielsen?
Yes.
I move we adjourn to closed session to discuss water sewer litigation and discuss an active police investigation.
Second.
Walagora?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
And Noah?
Yes.